City Council to order Monday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. You can get a call please.
Nathan here.
Lauren here.
Here, Danielson.
Here.
Daisy, Nathan.
Here.
Steve, Ken.
Here.
First, I need approval of the agenda, approved, approved. Second, Dan Bryan. You guys, second time you vote. It's approved, takes us to consent agenda, any item may be removed, start consideration, will you approve? Okay, Bart. You guys, second time you vote. Approved, takes us to public forum, time to decide for comments in the public on topics of city business, others than those will come in then, time to be taken, comments of five minutes or less. First, we do have some proper making there, this is time, I won't be reading them all, but we had potential two ninety feet, we have library card kind of month, we have the crop under walk, and there's some folks here from that that would like to do a photo op for that proper make. Go off the special line here, and we're going to get some photos. I don't know if they want to say anything about the block too before we do that. Bart, call because I think.
No, no, no. Last year took one more. Just in hand. We have one more coming.
Is that coming first?
Yeah.
Like it's Sunday.
Twenty four.
Well, for doing that, October first.
Yeah, it's first, it's Sunday. Yes, it's Sunday.
Coming up next, sorry, October. Is there anyone else here to speak to make public forum?
Okay, you know me. Yeah, I've been in the town for thirty years. No more, there's a lot of people saying, where do I get that place? A lot of people. That God bless, leaves, and tweets. Not myself, I was just trying to be able to ask the way you want to take, leave, the way you want to stay there. Come on.
Right now, you have to take it to aim for Marshall's house. The garbage, the garbage haulers will also take it from anyone who called them.
And you, well, as I just said, you are not welcome very hard to get that place in this town.
We've, we've gone over the timeline on this, seven or eight times. We have explained that seven or eight times at these meetings of what our timeline is. We're working on the wastewater plant decommissioning and we're building the new one, and those are the two prime places that we're looking at the land.
For that place.
Yeah. But we're in the middle of building a plant and decommissioning a plant, it's not happening this year, probably won't happen next year.
Well, I've been doing it for a while, I said, you're not going to pay that hard to get it done, but people in this town. At all.
We're limited on space, so there's another, we just can't put it anywhere, the majority of the agents of the UN, we'll, we'll arrive by the crib. Which, we can't because of the hundred, hundred year flood, so, all around the area. There, we're, we're very, very limited on space.
Everyone knows they hear that, I used to hear, uh, writing in concrete, well, I have to go and use concrete, why have they lined up for this?
We use, we use the ground up concrete for watering repairs, uh, other, uh, dwellings up, but we can't use it much as clean rock or other projects because of the dirt. Rebar that they weren't able to get out with magnet and stuff like that, it was, it was much dirtier concrete than anticipated, but it is being utilized. As well as the asphalt that we have, being utilized all along the shoulders and then completely have plans for utilizing it in some daily ways to move it off. So.
Good, why, why don't we get now, put it here somewhere, H Street, that's not great, and that has been lasted a long time.
That is correct. For that. We're to the point, if we take out concrete now, we, we've got to replace the utilities underneath, and that runs roughly four hundred dollars dollar a block, and we have, I don't know, probably thirty some blocks, we maybe want to help on them. So utilizing that, and trying to swing that in our, that's pretty short of damage, it's, it's a very.
We have another thing to add, because we already thought of the back.
Yes.
That placement passed out two times, two times. So normal patching there.
That's, that's reasonable.
And then I decided, if I did come back, you were saying, does that improve that area there or not?
Yes.
You guys.
Yes, for the street improvement program that you're referencing, yeah, we, we had, um, company come through, raid our roads, got so rated our roads, and we were working on, where it comes first. So second street from Lincoln Highway to, uh, ended in North Avenue, is on the list, that was one of the first to go.
And then, you want to call it, whether that little thing you said after that, after that, the little.
Oh, the, the desire, the, the, no, that's, that's usually thing, um, did you have an upper form, I'll call it every day, so, maybe you have a legal contact.
What are you doing on second street, you had to go as far as that.
Yeah, we'll go up to railroad right away for repair, but we're looking into viable options, uh, as far as overlay, things like that, so we're not on, on the job, like, we are on S fourteen for, I don't know, a year, nine months.
Oh, I don't know, somebody told me that, uh, if I had a guy, yeah, fine.
I'm so hopeful, Louis, but you've been here for thirty years, you know that they've landed just about everything that they can under that roadway in that area. It's a storm water collection point, it's the matronet, E high, it's the winter and E high, everything in that intersection, so, they're, they're working diligently to get it done, but as far as, uh, let's drop that, they, I don't know. Because every day, so they go to the job, it's like lock and bound, we just keep on doing it.
Well, hopefully in three years, about a dump place, it's gonna take a little bit, three years to get that place done. Done this year.
I think that is the challenge.
Don't you think so?
It's gonna depend on how we'll do. Well, it's, it's gonna have to decide what it's gonna cost and where to put it, and there's a lot to figure out, Louis.
Well, that's the council, council thing, you know, don't you think it three years, we should have a dump place? Hopefully. I also do, the big law lawsuit, law people ask the way you want to take this, they come to me. You know, I got a question, I can take it, but I gotta tell them. That's all I got, sick. But I, so. And in my eye, I'm saying, I just hope to die in three years, that dump place. And when they do that dump place, they ship it up again, put cameras in, so nobody will take a bet about it down, like they did the old dump place. Don't you agree?
Or.
Okay.
Is there anyone else to speak in the public forum? See, now we'll close public forum, the whole business A, prepared up from four feet per fifty thousand feet, amount of two hundred forty four thousand seven hundred dollars in fire. I'm going to do for a second, you, Dave. You guys, second time you vote. And that's approved, comes to B, for favor number eight, for twenty twenty two street improvement, for the mass, and the amount of two hundred seventy five thousand, or thirty five thousand. Please approve, Bart. Number seven, I'm going to be vote. Approved, new business A, approval of Richard Green, full credit professional service agreement, and number one, for a project.
Thank you, Mayor Council, uh, sunny concrete, we're state of green, and the project, uh, there, four, here's our green project. And, uh, so, I wanted a little background, industry quick. Um, the project has been going along fairly predictably, and, and well at this point, we're about the sixty percent we possibly. However, as we submitted for the, uh, to the various agencies that we've already submitted to, um, became apparent that the Army Corps of Engineers, um, has changed their rules for everything. And as a result, we have been requested to do a number of additional items. Specifically, normally we would permit this under what's called a, a regional or an nation-wide permit, which is fairly standard, fairly easy to do, they've asked us to move into what's called an individual permit, which means that we have to do some more archaeological, fieldwork. And a number of, so, we have.
So there's no recourse in terms of, we've already started the project, we're already, this day, there's no, we're returning, then, because the entire work is all, it's all in the whole line, and it's when the start, the Army Corps of Engineers now, they got a long project, you're mid. You're mid.
So.
It's a big course, this part of the project, thank you.
Part of the Army Corps of Engineers, and their plot, or, or, who, who, beginning of the permit, they just submitted. We don't generally submit permit into the word, at sixty percent point, there's sort of that squeeze between, um, conceptual planning, and then the final audit, that, that, that.
So the work that you've done to this point, permit is not lost.
Very well.
This additional.
Additional effort to work through that.
Approved, takes us to B, reservation sixteen, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, reservation seven, band a new service agreement for a field path.
Good evening, Mayor Council, uh, you guys have the action forum for you in regards to that name at the Phil House, and on its contract, so we need to bring that to you, for your approval. Um, I think the action forum probably lays everything out as far as what we've done, research we've done, they have a look at the contract, being, uh, something that's pretty interesting to go with, as making those conditions that they prefer approval, so, um, unless any questions? Concerns, comment?
I'm a little over your phone.
Sorry.
If the name. You guys, second you vote.
Thanks for your response. Yep, thank you.
Approved, taking C, reservation thirteen, coming to maybe twenty twenty four, reservation awarding services for application, and innovation, that is going to be due down on, you've got all of it, and Graham. Will so approve.
You have one more.
I made a motion, did anyone say? Sorry. Okay, so this was all sent out, uh, after you guys approved that, um, you, because, in August, beginning of August. And, uh, we only had one person submit, we submitted several people, um, this is the year about the joint, so I think it's because they just stepped in proposal, we were too similar.
People check, for any of their, I'm personally, this is related to how they work, and the mayor will, will, will about this.
Yeah, so they, they will need, uh, in order to turn this application, we know we are working in time, in order to, so, once we leave by the next council meeting, we will have all of our proposals and our, our acuse for qualifying for architecture front, and then that's when we can be, you know, make. If I make this, or, no, but they start some of the projects right now.
Have you talked to the political firm they're serving?
Yeah.
She could have had a, oh, we're.
Yeah, um, we've never come up with a city, and a few things before, but, um, yes, we have.
With the people that, okay, I'm talking about the work, maybe if there's some good to read to you, have you talked to the voters?
Yes, I have talked to.
And I say, are, if they're in the pot.
Correct, I have talked to Knoxville, and Heather, please, we have a Florida attorney, and I also work with on, on those board papers. Outside of these, you mean. Now. Any further discussion, I'm going to be voting. Approved, it's just the D for, pretty popular, required, and. We, uh, a while back, we did get quotes on several buildings, street shed, wastewater, rerates, water, um, some of the aspects for parks and rec, their facilities, the reason we have gone to last round, because they currently installed a couple of our city services, and they, they have provided the best deals, we are also able to utilize our servers rather than day and night, like we do for, so it saves us many costs on this. The reason we wanted to install wastewater treatment, the current one and the golden one, is because we, uh, did have a situation that weeks ago was in fireworks that were allowed, and we want to keep track of, we was all going, well, that's, and we also want to keep progress on the industrial projects. This is for current, this is for your, see, free cameras that will cover all aspects of.
I'm lighting for that void.
Uh, I believe once we get this approved, um, I will be the calling pop of the department, but it might take very long to install, I probably, will probably need one, two weeks of, um, notification, for, for letting them know, and then they'll be able to install it. When they came and installed the, I want to say those ground hay cameras for Sue, Sue Hall there, and then. It's not too difficult. You will be able to use these even after, even if I'm going to return, revert this back, I hope, yeah, and we will be able to remove them, and we will do another location, definitely, just then, you know.
Okay.
We have more, we have, motion more. Yeah, I'll second, the, other discussion. The, now, we go. Well, three, what's starting to be moving then? Uh, last week, the mayor, Chris, Rick, and Aaron, all went to our Iowa League of Cities meeting, uh, or conference, and there was a lot of good topics there. First thing, we kind of discussed, were some of the issues that other cities are creating, um, they're not dealing with basically everything, the, the financial issues, uh, some different concerns that cities are thinking on regular basis. Uh, we also went to an industrial free treatment certified site meeting, dealt with free treatment, what they thought, agreements, all, all along those lines, we have done several times, and, and we're working on it, so. That was very beneficial to listen to, and got basically confirmed that we're going down the correct path for that. Also went to status and strategies relating to rural water, uh, unfortunately, it wasn't getting very much great news, hanging out there, and with this stuff that we've been here for the past several years, and what we can, we can do, retaining some rural life. You could get a copy of that, or. Maybe, I asked, I asked several questions, I think I was probably the one person that had majority of the questions, um, so. Doing, um, and then, diversity and inclusion class, and that was brought on by Storm Lake, they have really great programs to include and diversify, uh, different respects of our community. Uh, so it was just fun listening to some of the things that they do, one of the fun things, we did was convert a hunky into a nice thing, uh, that'll give him, you know, the government's, from people. Um, it was a kind of fun that we didn't do all the fun that he did, their police department, when they asked about duty, and they have their facilities, and people would come and shoot hoops, and, you know. By the police, so, so, that was really funny, and unfortunately, we don't really have a lot of, from the backside of our pocket, to do some, but, um. So another thing I went to was, um, new industry, how to handle and deal with new industries coming to town, uh, basically, how to set that up and set things up, what we are working, so, basically, that means providing feedback on water needs, the wastewater, these, things along those lines, like the electricity, all of that stuff, or really kind of covering a lot of these, on all those, um. Other meetings, twenty forty progress meeting, had a meeting with the county pertaining to a riot grant, and our board meeting for any, which is, uh, Iowa State and School Utilities. Uh, leadership steering committee, we're getting ready to start new leadership, and it's gonna be really fun, it's not going to be as usual, or anything's gonna be, it's getting better as we're moving forward. Also, our wellness committee, to figure out if we need to include, add, or detract from the things that we do on the wellness program. And then we had our, a couple of wastewater consulting meetings, we had our own development committee, and to decide who we were going to go with, which, uh, the, 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 you know, the, the, was already provided us with an updated copy of the wastewater agreement that we have been currently working on, I can forward that over to you guys, um, later on tonight or tomorrow. He also proposed a wastewater manual, which is great, that's what I was kind of referring to, basically, is doing all the wind, uh, all of the BODs, he gave me a whole, on the concept of what I need to waste water, he basically proposed what I would, we need to sell rates, or, and, so. Uh, really beneficial, I think, he's doing the work I've created for the city, and, so, the, 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 you know. I'm going to keep it short. From my report, don't have much to add, Jay, uh, Jordan did a good job talking about the recon, but, both my time, last meeting. Not very good. We can all head to the back. You're up.
Water leak control, we've got our regular operation maintenance, that we already do, labs and all that, uh, we've repaired to the grit screen entrance, and, uh, set up inspections for our backflow, we have two of them are better, and they got overlooked a couple of years since our last inspection, so we'll get that online, get back in track, and then, uh, DMRQ before we send into the EPA for our efficiency lab, and single car lab, that we use a lot of. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, you guys, tonight. If you guys have, uh, been out and about, we did get our camera trailer, so if you see the guys out, and you want to jump on in there and take a look at what we're doing, I mean, it's kind of a neat, neat deal.
What was on you today, was that, that on you today?
Yes, so right now, we're going through and looking at the road that we want to overlay, and looking at the infrastructure that's underneath the, um. So far, so good, with the sewers, we're pretty happy with that, um, then we'll be, uh, getting the sweeper out come, come fall, for the, uh, the leaves, and, uh, we'll be trimming trees. Any questions? Thank you.
The street finance report, we're gonna have training next Wednesday and start on the report, and Gary's gonna kind of preview it with us, and Ryan learns some of it. We also have a meeting with Debbie Lee for our health insurance renewal, and, um, the renewal sounds pretty good, we'll see, we'll go from there. We've also been reviewing the timeline for the budget, we may push the workup, typically, in the past, we've had the workup, um, the last meeting in January, and thinking about pushing it back to the first meeting in February. There's two things that have changed, the April thirtieth date is longer now, but there's, uh, a requirement that we have to send to the Department of Management, that maximum levy that we come, I used to do with the maximum levy resolution. By three fifteen, March fifteenth, but the county is obviously wanting it quicker, because they're required then to take that information and send out statements to every resident, um, within the county, basically. And then we have to have a public meeting after that. Separate than the regular meeting, so I was kind of thinking maybe by forty five, before a regular meeting, and then, something like that. And then we still have to have a public hearing, the regular one we have for the budget, so, working through some of that, um, I am up the way is middle of October, October eight through the twentieth, and there's second, on the Wednesday, that starts on, the new legislation school, learn, more terrible, just trying to work through all of that wonderful changes, and, okay. So as long as we have a good, and we can use, we're coming always, we'll try and keep it close to our regular meetings that we've been doing, that. So I am, if there's any questions. Good evening, Council and Mayor, uh, quick, uh, economic development update for you this evening, um, just a reminder, Wednesday at seven forty five, we're gonna officially have the groundbreaking for the new cutting edge painting facility, so they're gonna be going kind of in the back corner, uh, right along Lincoln Way, uh, at the industrial property that's owned by Innovate Economic Development Council, um, at Airport and Lincoln Way Fair. We'd love to have you join us at seven forty five AM on Wednesday, uh, and also, uh, Friday morning at seven AM, uh, the Ames Economic Development, uh, Commission is having their board meeting, Innovate at the Fairgrounds, so um, we meet at seven AM, and usually are done by eight, uh, and, um, Reynolds Kramer, uh, with Fairway is our chair this year, and he's really been the one that's been committed to grow out to the communities, and so um, Reynolds is actually gonna be, uh, leading the meeting on Friday, and I've extended invitation, if you wish to attend, you're welcome, uh, hang out with me, if, yeah, I want to, we're expecting, we usually have a pretty good turnout, about fifty folks from around the region will be at the meeting, and I wanted to make sure that you were, knew that you were welcome to attend, putting my foundation hat on, uh, wrapping up the, getting the scores for this round of funding, and so I anticipate at your first meeting in October, I'll be
And so I anticipate at your first meeting in October, I'll be here with the foundation recognition, really, that'll probably take up most of the funding that you still have left to work, so over sixteen thousand. Um, that's my report, any economic development questions tonight?
Well, Bill, Council, uh, thank you, Mayor, for, for, for doing the proclamation for National Library Quick Sign up Month. Um, as of today, at about five P M., we had twenty-nine new accounts at the library this month, which is about average for us, um. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we had four hundred and forty-two new accounts, and then so far this year, we have a hundred and four. Uh, we anticipate a big jump, because we are partnering with the school district to get every single student, unless their parents pop them out. Um, a library part, and it will be a limited use part that will allow them to check out, um, but access to all of our online and digital materials. So that way, when, um, teachers bring their classes to the library for different things, um, kids have those accounts, then even. When the teachers aren't reading, and when the kids are coming after school, we've already got those accounts made for them, um, we've got good solid contact information for them as well, and so. We're really excited to add a whole lot more library accounts this month, um. Next week, uh, actually, it's a Sunday, October first starts Band Books Week, this is a national celebration that's been going on since nineteen eighty. To celebrate the freedom to read, um, last year, uh, the American Library Association Office for Intellectual Freedom. Have almost, I think, triple or quadruple the normal amount of book challenges than they have in the past, and so. Uh, one of the mission states, or our mission statement at the library, one of the pieces of it includes that. The Nevada Public Library supports the, uh, Library Bill of Rights, which includes, um, the idea that every book has its reader, and every reader has a book for them. And we really believe that, and so we are kind of celebrating, um, access to information and, um. The freedom to read next week, and actually, all, through all of October, we'll be celebrating that at the library. And then lastly, we are also still working on our strategic plan that will start in twenty twenty-three, we've kind of pushed it back a few months, um. Summer got a lot more busy than I anticipated, and so we are now, uh, starting in October, and then. Running through, uh, probably December or January, we'll be doing focus groups and small group discussions about how to improve library services, programs, resources. And so we start in October with our community conversations for our big grant, we got, um, about accessibility in the library, and so I encourage. You to come if you'd like, or if you know anybody who has mobility issues, mobility disabilities, or, um, just needs extra space and, and, um. Extra tools to access the physical space of the library, uh, we have three teams over for them, we hope to have, um, small focus groups for middle school students, or high school students as well. That we'll be doing with our regular programming, we hope to do a, a business owners one, so I'm gonna reach out to me and straighten, try to cut that off. Um, and then, um. Focus groups for other groups of library patrons, or maybe, um, more under served, or have less voice in the community, just so that we can hear how we can. Relations, so keep your eyes peeled for those. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Trump, I don't have anything tonight, um, we, we have you confirmed for Wednesday at four thirty, we feel house for visits, so. Look forward to seeing you there, I'd be happy to answer any questions again.
Well, uh, not a lot to report, still in the hiring process, uh, by the next meeting, it should be, we'll kind of update where we're going, and usually we are in the process. Uh, as Jordan was saying, definitely, last week, I kind of. Taking me out of the police world and introducing me to our administrative world, so that's interesting to see, and, um. Wrapping up some, some projects, we got a couple things at school and homecoming this week that were working on, and they have a plan for this day. Answering questions, we have.
Definitely, Council, um, permits and do some things as usual, um. I guess a big one to talk about is our S fourteen project, uh, left in. So, of course. First phase ran into some issues, the second phase was followed too, uh, a big one is the storm water line, we kind of switched from the west side to the east side. Uh, running it next on the west side next to our water main, it was gonna cause some issues, you know, the water mains will burn and stuff like that, anytime. You go to dig it, obviously, which is the soil that decided you make those scoops to dig, I didn't want to take a chance of butting that water main, so we switched it over to the east side. Which has allowed us to run the line easier, as well as pick up some, uh, swarm, and things, and things like that. Uh, we kept the north side of S fourteen from left in closed, uh, any traffic going to the north. Relatively, it would be okay to go under the bridge and out, it's the traffic coming in from the north to the south, that kind of an issue as it would turn east. To go to West Bird Street, or Second Street, or anything like that, uh, the roadway that we have paved in that area with asphalt is not. Wide, it's wide enough for vehicles to go west, but not someone to make a semi or two or less, or. You know, bigger vehicles to make that turn to head east now, so that's why we've kept that closed, didn't want to take a chance of somebody falling over the lip that's there, or cutting through. The private property that runs alongside there to, to, uh, cut the gap, so that's the reasoning why S fourteen to the north does save those for now. Um, and speaking with the Nats to try and get them to finish that intersection right away. Um, we'll see where that leads, their big concern about that is running the curve, or the radius of the curve, and getting it to match and flow as it did with direct water. That's what we kind of landed. Any questions? Perfect, thank you.
I do, was the first timer this year, uh, Lee Hunter, um, that was great, uh, I'll be back on the terrace, I mean, trying to, or they're trying to. Um, and lastly, I'm still working a little. He's hearing the.
Don't have anything, I'm up there, just copying. Move to your. Right. I'm gonna face him, I'll be safer, I have the phone. And you might stand there.